Good evening, planning board is now in session. Apologize for the late start. My daughter's in the hospital and ran a little bit later than I thought. Things are getting better, though. First item on the agenda is the election of planning board members. Board organization. So, where's that? Was it in our packet, right?
It isn't there. Oh, yes. No, no. This is to do with... Once they're...after an election, and Andy's a new...re-elected, not new, I'm sorry. He's the planning board member that was re-elected this year. At the next...typically at the next planning board meeting, the board has to vote to reorganize who's president, who's chair, who's vice chair, so that we can officially let the town clerk know.
Make a motion that Don Morris remain chair.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? As...thank you, I appreciate that. I'm willing to do it again, but if someone else wants to do it, I'd be gladly...gladly sit at the end of the table. Any more discussion? Hearing on all in favor? Three to zero, to zero, to zero.
I'd like to make a motion that Andrew Mills remain vice chair.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
No discussion?
No.
The chairman has the ability to wave the discussion.
I was just gonna offer if anyone else wanted the...
No, that's not on...no. So, we have the chair and the vice chair for the next year, hopefully. What else do we have? We had assignments to...oh, we did the assignments for the Metro West last time, right?
Yes, we covered...planning board rep to Shopsey was Jesse Stein. Mimi is the planning board rep to Metro West Regional Collaborative. And Andy is the representative to CPC. Thank you.
Did all those...I know you were writing all those letters. Did they...they did receive them?
Yes, all letters.
Do you know if they did do the appointments, the selectmen yet?
Um, I think it's this week. It's Thursday...I believe it's Thursday. The agenda just got posted today, so I'll check the online agenda.
I just have a CPC meeting on Thursday. I wanted to know if they'll ask me, so...
I think their meeting's tomorrow, but I have to check on the website. Thursday?
Um, don't we also have to mem...recognize and welcome another member on the table?
Yes, we do. I'd like to introduce our new principal department assistant for planning, Pamela Rivera. Today's her first day and first planning board meeting, and she's already been a great asset just one day already. She's helped me organize the budget and et cetera, all kind...in just one day, so, um, welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
You have to press the button.
I'm happy to be here.
We're happy that you are here. We've been without...we've been a one-person department since January, so we've increased our...we've doubled our workforce today. It's great. What else? Onto the next one. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 154...156 North Borough Road, major site plan approval. I'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
Okay, this is the public hearing notice for major site plan approval and special permit for lower impact development, 154-156 North Borough Road, assessors map 70 parcel two. Per section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, June 4th, 2018, in the Thomas J. McCallum Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, to consider the application of Joel Aho for major site plan approval at 7:00 PM. Per section 174-133 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, June 4th, 2018, at the Thomas J. McCallum Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, to consider the application of Joel Aho for lower impact development special permit at 7:05 PM. These hearings concern the development of 25,098 plus or minus square feet of mixed-use garage contractor bays, 20 units, with a parking lot, sewage disposal system, and associated appurtenances on a 4.65 acre parcel located in the industrial park zoning district at 154-156 North Borough Road, assessors map 70 parcel two. Copy of the plans and applications can be viewed at the planning office at the Town of Southborough house during...townhouse during normal business hours or town website at southboroughtown.com/planning. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Don Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. Terry, is that okay? There's been quite a number of submittals on this, including one from the fire department way back in January, there was a letter from the building inspector, conservation commission in April, and we have our consultant's letter dated May 30th, 2018.
If you want me to, I can give you a quick...
Which is eight and a half pages, nine pages in length. I'll ask the town planner to go through some of this stuff before we call on the applicant.
All right, so generally, the planning office received an application on May 11th for major site plan approval and a special permit for the lower impact development. It was filed with the town clerk on May 15th, once we got some supplemental information. It was published in the newspaper on May 21st and May 28th, as required, prior to the public hearing opening tonight. The abutters were notified, mailed out on May 16th, and we received the green cards back for all of the abutters on the certified abutters list. We then engaged Fussin O'Neill as the town's reviewing consultant to begin review of the plans, which they did, which culminated in their first comment letter, which we received on May 30th, and it was also forwarded back to the applicant and their engineer, Stamsky and McNary, for review, along with the comments from the fire department that were received on May 21st, which brings us to this evening where the applicant will describe the plans in more detail. They are currently...well, they did receive...the applicant did apply to the zoning board of appeal for variances for front and back setbacks, if I'm not mistaken, and then you had also asked for a special permit for two buildings on one lot, multiple uses at one site, and I believe there was a third request.
Some of the uses require...Mark Bobrowski, counsel for the applicant, some of the uses require a special permit, namely limited manufacturing or light manufacturing.
That's right.
And storage, I believe, is the other one.
Okay, and then at a pri...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's private garage.
Private garage. And then at a prior planning board meeting, the applicant came under a discussion item in order to field some questions during the design process they had not submitted yet. And then, following that, the applicant requested that a meeting be set up with the department heads, so that they could also help the different departments understand what was happening on the site, because there's, you know, quite a bit going on in that parcel, and culminated in some comments back during that meeting, which hopefully they were able to address and incorporate some of those items. And that brings us to tonight, where we officially opened the public hearings.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Could you introduce...reintroduce yourself and your team for us tonight?
Bill Hall with Stamsky and McNary, the engineer on the project. Mark Bobrowski is sitting next to me, and behind me is the applicant, Joel Aho.
You're on.
We'd like to show you some of the changes to the plan since the last meeting first. Many of them address the comments of your peer reviewer.
Okay, so, to begin, just to go through, I know you're familiar with the project, but if there's anybody that's not familiar with it, I'll run through it real quick. But it's a single building on North Borough Road. It's just at the end of the town line. There's Marlboro off to the west, and then also North Borough is down in this area. And what it is, is it's 20 units of mixed use with some office space in the middle. All the parking is along the back. It's two-way, 22-foot wide access coming down on either end of the building, served by a septic system and Town of South Borough water. The drainage is caught by catch basins and then goes into hydrodynamic separators to get treated before it gets infiltrated in underground chambers and eventually discharged at either end of the site, and there's a wetland located on this portion of the site. So that's just a quick overview of it. Based on the last meeting that we had with you, we expanded what we have for dumpsters on the site, so now we've expanded this area here to include more dumpster area. Still showing one at each corner, and then there's more storage for dumpsters in this area should tenants need that. Snow storage was another item that came up. For that, what we have done is we've pushed the driveway out to not only accommodate the dumpsters, but then also get some snow storage here. This could be additional parking, or in the winter it could be snow storage, and then also down the slope is snow storage. From my calculations that I've run, if you had seven inches of snow across the whole parking lot, then you could fit it into this hole here about level with the parking, so there should be plenty of snow storage for a storm, and hopefully we get some time for it to melt in between, and if that doesn't work, then they'll have to start getting it off-site, but...talking to the DPW came up about narrowing the street. That was something...we did meet with them. They're not concerned with the width on the street. I believe they said that that had already been narrowed some time ago, so they weren't...they didn't have a concern with that. And we have also reached out to the railroad company to get their opinion on the project as well, and I'll let Mark go into detail on that. We did receive the review comments, and we have started addressing them. We have not submitted revised plans that address those comments, but we have started the process of that, and there's quite a few of them, but it's a lot of detail and nothing that we see to be too major in there. So now I'll hand it to Mark.
Thank you. I had my associate look into the railroad issue, and he sent an email to me today reporting his findings. The railroad company in question here is CSXT. If the project involves encroachment or construction on any portion of the railroad company's land, they will require an occupancy agreement and engineering agreement to review the project in its entirety. If the town requires something in writing from CSXT, they will need an engineer agreement to review the project in its entirety. And generally, if the project is 50 feet away from the railroad line and the tallest structure or construction fixture was to fall, it would not affect the...and it would not affect the track, CSXT does not see any issues with the project, but will not provide anything in writing without an engineering agreement. So there's work to be done there, and an engineering agreement requires us to pay the upfront costs of their engineers, probably somewhere around the $2,000 to $5,000.
Open up to the planning board, Mr. Mills.
So, thank you for that brief overview to begin with. I wasn't here for the first one, as you probably recognize. So I guess the snow storage, just a couple of questions, I know it was revised, and so where you're talking about putting it, like how high do you think it's gonna get? I'm sure you...it was discussed before, safety on this road, just a couple of accidents that have happened. Well, I've been here in this town.
Yes.
And it's been tragic, so that's obviously a huge concern. You wanna make sure that there's visibility coming out. You know, the last couple of years, we had some big storms. If you're keeping all the snow on that location where you're pointing, you know, right where you're coming out, I'd be worried that it's gonna get so high, it's...you're gonna have to creep out in the road a little bit before you can even...
Yes, so, when I calculated that seven inches, that was just level with the parking, because that's a fairly deep hole in that area, and you are coming up as you come out that driveway. So, anything that was higher than the driveway, I understand your concern that you wouldn't want something eight or 10 feet tall out of there, so that's why when I did the calculation, I just did it level to the parking area.
So, and if it starts getting higher, what's the plan for that?
Either they'd have to find another spot off closer to the building, which probably isn't preferred, or it would be snow removal.
And the...the lighting plan that we have, Karina, is...it looks like it hasn't been updated. I mean, just looking at the driveway, it doesn't look like it's the same, based off of that rendering there. Is it...do I have an older one, or is that...
What is the...that plan that you have there on the bottom?
It says, "May 9th." That's...is this...that's different than that.
Is this changed?
No.
Has this plan...has this...
This plan changed since your submission?
Oh, no, I'm looking at this one.
I believe the lighting plan has to be updated.
Oh, that's the lighting plan. Are you talking landscaping or lighting?
Lighting.
The lighting plan is the only one that you gave us to date. There wasn't an update to that, so that is the one.
Correct. Yes, and we will have to get that updated for the change to lay out.
And the traffic study, I think that was one of the comments from...from Fussin O'Neill. Has that been performed?
Well, we'd like to suggest something less than a traffic impact assessment of full bore, so what we'd like to do is crash data, trip generation, trip distribution, but not go into the whole level of service analysis at nearby intersections. We don't think it's gonna generate that much traffic, and it's a...it's a factor of three in terms of the cost, a multiplier of three, if you go to a full-blown traffic study. So, those parameters are usually in the range of $6,000 to $8,000 for the study, but we would look at crash data for nearby intersections. We would look at trip distribution from the site and trip generation from the site, and volumes of existing roadway in contrast with capacity. Those...I think that would suffice for the purposes of this.
The variability of the different businesses that go in there are gonna have, you know, how much traffic goes in and out of there as well, correct?
Well, that's something we wanna talk with you about. The four uses that we envisioned for the building, two are allowed by right and two are allowed by special permit. The two that are allowed by right are office and storage, and the two that are allowed by special permit are private garage and light manufacturing. If you took the worst parking generator of all of those, it's probably office. Office generates parking at 3.5 spaces per thousand, GFA, and your definition of gross floor area uses a factor of 80 percent, so you're subtracting out...just with the formula, you're subtracting out stairways and storage areas and things of that sort. 3.5 per thousand, 24,000 square foot building, we need 67 parking spaces, and I think that plan shows 72 on the outside. So that's our worst-case scenario in terms of parking. That's...if light manufacturing is the...is factored in, that's a different ratio. It's one per 300, again, GFA, that would be 64 parking spaces. There is no parking requirement for storage, none whatsoever, so our worst-case required scenario is 67 parking spaces. And we have...what we'd like to do is...this is a very difficult situation where you're proposing these uses, but you don't have a tenant.
Understood.
And they may...they may come all light manufacturing, they may come all office, they may come all private garage. If we...if we put a bubble over the building and we know we have enough parking for it, no matter what the mix is, and that would be...the 67 is the max under the office use, we're five spaces over that, then there ought to be some inter...ability to change tenants without a special permit process, which is really important to somebody doing this. If we have to wait another, you know, advertised 65-day public hearing, 90 days after the hearing to get the decision, that tenant's gone.
So would you define the metal finishing company just down the street as a light manufacturing, or...I'm just curious?
I don't know...I don't know the...the nature of the business down the street, but I think in this kind of a complex, you'd get something like a welder who would be fixing or repairing certain, you know, things that they use in business, not necessarily vehicles.
So there'd be no 18-wheelers necessarily backing up into the building? I know...I used to drive this route every day for 15 years to go to Fidelity, so the other manufacturing company, I know it's in Marlboro, I get stuck behind 18-wheelers trying to back in and out of there, it would be a nightmare. Not...so, I just...I wanna make sure that, you know, I'm talking about safety is the concern, and I don't wanna have...see that we're blocking the road for any reason.
Yeah, just to speak to that, I...I've actually been involved in marketing, 'cause I sell and lease commercial real estate, and the building just down the street at 72 Cedar Hill Street in Marlboro is one that if you back an 18-wheeler up, the cab is in the street. But the loading for 72 Cedar Hill Street is on the front of the building. All of our loading is in the rear of the building, so there's no loading for a truck to even pull into on the front. We don't have any proposed loading docks right now, they're all drive-in doors. I'm not saying that...that an 18-wheeler couldn't still come in and, you know, I mean, if you put a loading dock out back or something, but in either case, you'd have, you know, the flow is coming off the street and coming back here, and all your activity is all back here, whereas 72 Cedar Hill, all the activity's up front.
Yep, that's exactly what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
So those are my initial questions. Like the chairman said, there are quite a few here. I assume we're not gonna close this tonight, so, good for now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stein.
So, the snow storage on the far right, that...is that...are you gonna be actually digging up and creating like a culvert?
So, it's actually filled...it's partially filled from expanding the driveway over, and then there's fill from the septic system. It just created a valley through there. The original proposal was to have a riprap swale, which we have left there just for any overland flow. However, there's a head wall that terminates on the property line, and what we're proposing is to put a manhole in there and then pipe it further down, so that gives you the ability to push snow over there and not have to worry about backing up the drainage from next door where that pipe is coming from.
Yeah, I think one thing that Mr. Jenks had brought up was the natural inclination of the snow plow to just push the snow off the back of the site onto the railroad tracks.
Correct, yeah.
So, can you just sort of explain how that mitigate? Because is the snow plow gonna actually push the snow all the way over to that?
Well, there is a guardrail along most of the back of the parking, so I think that would help prevent it, because I know that Joel wouldn't want that guardrail being replaced every year. So that's part of something that would help prevent that, and then there would just have to be discussions with the contractor that's doing the snow removal, that, listen, this is where we need the snow to go to, and if they need a bobcat or something like that to get it there, then that would be the case.
So let's just revisit the waste management for a second, as far as the dumpsters. So you have 20 units, all of which could be light manufacturing theoretically. So can you just kinda go through in a little bit more detail how the dumpster, you know, the dumpster situation's gonna be adequate for that?
Sure, I'll let Joel speak to that.
So, and Bill, do you know how many dumpsters we figured we could fit in here?
It's four or five in there. I believe there's...
It's four or five there. I believe there's eight total proposed.
So, so, yeah, so you got room here for dumpster, you know, if you...if you could fit one there, one there, and then some here. These units are around 1,140 square feet, something like that. I...if...there's no way we're gonna have 20 dumpsters in here. I just...it wouldn't make any sense, and it's also probably not gonna...it's probably likely that we're gonna have some tenants that might take more than one unit, so if you had, say, somebody who took three units, that's...that's still probably under 4,000 square feet. There's no way you should need three dumpsters. I mean, typically with industrial space, you know, units are, you know, a 5,000, four or five thousand square foot unit is like a smaller size unit, and even them, they might not necessarily need their own dumpster. So that's something that we're gonna have to deal with on a case-by-case basis, as far as like a tenant comes in, what are your needs as far as the dumpster goes, and just kind of, you know, deal with that as it comes, but there's...I in no way anticipate there ever being 20 dumpsters on the site.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Are you gonna be onsite managing this property?
Uh, no. I'll be managing it, but not onsite, and it's only 24,000 square feet. Like across the street, you know, you've got...Maggiore has over 300,000 square feet, and I don't even think he has a management onsite, so, I mean, this is...this would be overkill to have onsite management here unless you just happen to be there, you know?
There...I could...I thought there was a mention of a management office in the...
Yeah, that came up, and...
So what's gonna be in the middle?
Yep, there'll be offices here, so, and again, being that we haven't pre-leased it, I could see a scenario where, say, somebody took, you know, one or two of these units or one or two of these, and if they needed a lot of office space, we could give this with that. We may have just like a common conference room that everybody has access to, or we may just rent out some individual offices in here. It's not a huge area, so, again, that will be office space. How it gets, you know, kinda divvied up will kind of, again, be a case-by-case basis as far as, you know, who shows up, as far as tenants go.
So, we're...are we looking at like basically 24-hour tenant access and use?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, as far as the lighting, this...this unit, that was gonna be mounted on the building, correct? Not on light poles?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me, for now.
I...as far as that lighting, I believe so. I was the one who was interacting with Rab who did it, and I just had him use basically the old plan, 'cause obviously this project had been permitted previously and just never built, and so I just got in touch with Rab and just had him use the old plan that they had and just update it. So, so there were units on the building. I don't know, you know, which unit you're referring to, but if that's...
This...
And maybe they were all on the...
So Rab prepared this...this plan here, page one of two, and it looks like that's the lamp.
Okay.
And based on this...I mean, we...Karina, we don't really have like a photometric plan yet, do we? Or did I just not see it?
I think it should be in there. Is that the one that shows like...
Is this it?
That's the second page. So there's a first page...there were four pages to that. So the first page is the one that shows the foot candles. It's small and they're half-size, but that shows the foot candles, and the second page shows the...kind of the glare, lighting... And the second page shows the, kind of the glare lighting effect. Uh, but again, they're not stamped, just so I reminded you that.
So, yeah, there's no like, there's no light poles in the parking lot per se, I, I don't think, is there?
Um, I'd have to look closer.
I think you might be right.
Okay.
It doesn't appear to be based on the second plan sheet, where the lighting is just generating off, off the building, it looks like.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, I, I mean, I hate creating, you know, more light, uh, but if the lighting is going to be actually adequate for the parking area, that'd be my kind of one question at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the photometric plan should, should show where the light is going to reach to, right?
It doesn't look like it reaches, it looks like it basically just shoots straight down.
But I, I meant.
Intuitively is going to be my preference nine times out of ten.
I, I think I meant like this plan though, and again, I'm, um, because, or is that the one? No, where's the one that, uh?
Yeah, that's what I was saying before.
Yeah, there was one, I thought, Karina, that I'd, that we had had that, that showed, you know, how far the light was going to go.
You submitted four sheets, this one in black and white, the second one that's with the, showing the light projection with the black. Then a fixture detail, and then, um, one more speck on the, the light fixture itself.
Right, okay.
I didn't see anything other than those.
Okay.
Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. I, I'm not going to go through all of the Fussell O'Neil questions, but I'm just curious about their question on parking, on why the gross, uh, square footage was reduced by twenty percent.
That's your definition of, uh, floor area gross in the definition section of the bylaw.
Okay.
It's on page, um, three, and it says, I'll just quote it to you. Floor area comma gross, the aggregate horizontal area in square feet of all floors of a building or several buildings on the same lot measured from the interior faces of walls enclosing each building, exclusives of stairs, elevator wells, garages, basement, and other areas used only for storage or for services incidental to the operation. In the absence of information as to what portion of the building will be used for such storage, eighty percent of the aggregate floor area shall be deemed the floor area for the purposes of computing required off-street parking and loading spaces.
Okay.
Having said that, I would call to your attention that the parking regulations, which are in the bylaw at page forty-four, jump around, and I'm, I'm hoping that where you say gross floor area, for example, but don't say it more than once, everything is meant to be gross floor area. So if you look at page forty-four in the parking requirements, and this is more a question for staff, very clearly, offices are thousand, three-point-five spaces for a thousand square feet of gross floor area, warehouses, one space for fifteen hundred of gross floor area, industry processing, manufacturing, one space for three hundred square feet of floor area. So somebody forgot to put gross, and I, I think they should all be the same, I can't imagine why you would not do that. I think it was just bad typing, to be confirmed. So when I said that the office space yields sixty-seven spaces, that's GFA. When I said that the light manufacturing yields sixty-four spaces, I assumed that was also GFA and took an eighty percent calculation. Eighty percent of twenty-four thousand is nineteen thousand two hundred square feet.
Okay. Um, on to landscaping. Twenty-eight of the thirty-six trees proposed are non-native, and I'd like to see native trees. Also, the perennials are non-native, um, a couple of the shrubs are non-native. And the, and the number of shade trees was reduced by fifty percent from the original landscape plan?
Uh, Karina, is that the, um, is that the one that we proposed or the alternate that we'd like to do? Because we gave two.
The updated one, the second one.
Well, they're both updated. So when I dropped, do you remember when I dropped off the package, it had a landscape plan? And then I sent you another one later saying, this is the one we would like to do.
May fifteenth.
The alternative.
Yeah, so I don't know which one she's referring to.
They have, the, the board members have both.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I don't know.
They're both labeled L-one, so you'd have to look if it says al-, alternative. Above the sheet number, it indicates the title of the plan. One was an original that you submitted, and then one, it says alternative.
Yeah.
And then we had to go through a couple of times because some didn't have the right dates on it, and then we said, so I'm hoping they have the most current.
I have May fifteenth. Is that the most current?
And Mimi, just to clarify, in the title block right here, does it say planting plan option two?
It does.
Okay.
May fifteenth, that would be the current alternative option two, um, alternate to the originally submitted with the package.
Okay, so that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, so, when we submitted the package, um, because when we came in for the informal hearing, one of the comments was, I just used, uh, the, the planting plan from when the project was previously approved and just had the same, um, landscape architect just update it. And so when we came in for just comments, you know, it had been mentioned, well, we prefer to see native, and there were some that weren't, and I said, I don't know why they weren't, I don't know if there's, you know, a reason why they did that or didn't. So I said, we'd look into it. So I, I followed up with him and had him do, um, all native as much as possible, um, which is probably not the plan you're looking at. It's, it's probably the other plan in there that we had included in the proposal.
No, this is the May fifteenth plan that I'm looking at. It's, there were.
What?
She should have two though.
Mimi Latrell is looking at right now is your final stamped submitted version of the alternate.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
And you're saying.
No, no, she.
You're referencing the original version stamped that was submitted, that was supposed to just be with the plan set.
Yeah, so she should have two landscape plans.
Yes, and.
Me too.
And she does.
Okay, so the one that I submitted would have mostly, if not all, uh, native. The one you're talking about was an alternative one, so I had, um, talked to the, the landscape architect, and, and he said why he didn't do all native in certain instances was, um, some of them are not as salt resistant. Um, they're just, I guess, he didn't think they were as, um, appropriate for, uh, wherever it was. So I, I told him, do one plan that just basically meets the town specs. Do a second plan that you would do if you were just saying what makes the most sense. And so we submitted both. So we would like to do the alternative, but we also submitted one that just met the town requirements. And I had him put notes on the alternative to state why, like what was the rationale for each change? So there should be notes, like little dialogue boxes.
Yeah.
On there. And, you know, we were just going to talk about it with the board and say, you know, if you say it has to be just by the specs, here's a plan that we can do. He seemed to think that, you know, he would, if he was just saying this, what makes the most sense for the site, and I didn't, um, you know, I didn't pick any of them, I just kind of gave him those two directions, and those are what he came up with.
Well, I want to see natives, there's many reasons to use natives, and there's more evidence every day of the damage of not using them.
Okay.
And how, how long is the, the building along the road, is that like seven hundred feet or something?
Do you know that though?
Um, yeah, it's about six hundred to six hundred and fifty feet.
So that's a lot of corrugated metal without a lot of, um, trees out front. Like it's not really buffered from, that's all you'll see driving down the road is metal, 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 metal. Well, there's shrubs, but that's not really going to buffer.
So, not to get confused, which planner, which planting plan are you referring to now? The alternative?
I'm looking at the most recent plan.
Okay, so, that's an alternate plan that we were just, again, putting up for discussion. There's another plan in there that should meet all the town specs and should have some trees out front. He thought it was overplanted in the front, and so again, I just said, you know, basically, you being an expert, what do you think is reasonable, come up with a design, and we'll propose it as an alternative, and then do another plan that meets all their specs. So there should be another one in there that, based on your comments, I think you're going to like a lot better.
Okay, I'll have to. I just reviewed the most recent one. Also, landscape, the bylaw requires a side and rear landscape buffer.
Uh, Karina, is that the, the one that I submitted with the? That, so, right up there on the screen is, is what?
That should be, um.
That's not.
PDF version I have.
That's not the alternative plan though, right?
Not the alternative, that's the, um, original submission that was submitted stamped, and then you had to submit it one more time to add the revision date, so the context should be the same as your original.
So I'm confused, I mean, it, it looks like there's, there are a bunch of trees being planted.
Yeah.
Up front, okay.
So that's like I said, there was, there's, there was two planting plans. One was where I told him, just make it meet the town specs, and then he said, well, you know, he thought it was overplanted up front, and, and there was a reason why he would pick some non-natives. So I said, well, just make an alternate plan and, and make comments as to why you made changes, and we'll just see what, you know, see what the board says. But I, I included both of them, so if, you know, as opposed to coming in with the alternate and you guys saying, no, that doesn't work at all, and then just having to go back to this other one, I just included them both at the same time.
So the, the, um, the non-alternate plan is very difficult to read, you can't see what's being planted where. It's like all bolded and very difficult, like I can't see what's, what's what on that plan.
For some reason, the plan you submitted with the plan set, the full-size copies, were bolded.
Okay.
So that's what Mimi's looking at right there. Like the line type when it was plotted was too thick to see.
Well, we can get, I mean, that should be an easy enough fix to get you a description. As far as the layout and the, and the, the side buffer and, uh, that you had referenced, is, is this plan here seem to address that?
Okay. But no rear buffer? And no, no planting in the parking area?
No.
Um, a question on the sign. On the, on the sheet, the descriptive sheet, it says it's five feet by, five feet high by seven feet wide. But then on the detail, it shows ninety-six inches height, not including the two slabs that it's mounted on?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, again, that was the one, I, I just had the sign guy, I said, just make it meet the town, the town specs.
So is it eight feet or is it five feet?
So I, I think maybe the difference is, he didn't know if the address on top, because I, I guess, I think some towns don't make you include the address as part of the sign.
Oh.
And so he didn't know if that was going to be counted as part of the sign, or if the sign was just the portion that included like tenant names and things like that, and the, and the, um, address on top of the sign was not part of the dimension. So he wasn't sure how you, you know, how, how Southborough interpreted that.
Mimi, I just want to point out, and for Joel, for your perspective, um, that landscape plan that was resubmitted, the original, that was stamped and signed, um, I think at the time you submitted seven half-size and one full-size, and I kept the one full-size here and gave them the half-size of that updated. So, that's probably where some of the confusion may come in. But I do have one copy of the full-size stamped with the right revision, uh, one full-size that I kept in my file.
Okay.
All right, and I think Mimi was looking at the original submitted, which is, hasn't changed, but when it was plotted out, it was thicker.
Okay.
All right.
I've aged out of the half-size plans, I can't see them. On to, um, lid, what are the, um, lid techniques that are going to be utilized in the site?
So we're doing as much as we can, given the nature of the site, um, just how tight it is from front to back. And what we're proposing with the grass channel along the front and the infiltration trench along the front to treat the walkway that's there. Other than that, we're going to catch basins for the parking, because there's just, there's not enough room to, between having the septic system on one end and the wetlands on the other end, to try and fit in some sort of, um, country drainage with a swale and a basin, so we were forced to go to catch basins with the separators and subsurface infiltration. So, most of the lid techniques are in the front of the building with the grass channel and infiltration trench.
Rain gardens? Roof garden?
We did not propose a rain garden.
You have a flat roof, don't you? No?
Um, we, we had spoke to the DPW, and they had mentioned to us that previously, uh, rain garden was proposed, and it was within the, partially within the right-of-way. The previous board apparently did not agree with that, did not like the idea of having a rain garden within the town right-of-way. The, what, what I understood from DPW is they wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it. That's something that we could definitely look into if the board was amendable to having a rain garden if it were within the town right-of-way, if that's okay with DPW.
Last question, um, you said you have a similar project in Acton? Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't call it, uh, the same, but. Did you have a question you want him to answer or not?
Well, I'm just wondering what kind of tenants you have in there, if it's a similar.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a self-storage property, so. So, I mean, this here could end up being storage, but it's, it's really not the, you know, they have some, some exterior buildings that, you know, would look similar to this, but, um, you know, I wouldn't. You know, we, we could have some tenants in here that they might not have in there.
So it's the self-storage, Acton self-storage, is that what?
Acton self-storage, yes.
Okay, and the buildings look the same?
No, it's actually a four-story building.
Microphone. It's kind of like a four-story building as the main building, but then we have outbuildings for outdoor storage. And the buildings, some of them would be somewhat similar, they're forty feet wide by a certain length, and they're divided into units. But they're, they're entered typically from the front and the back and divided in between, so they're strictly for self-storage, not for use by occupancy. So they're strictly for self-storage, not for use by occupancy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, before Mr. Morris starts, where are the, uh, the, the air conditioning and heating units?
Uh, I'll let my father Dan speak to that, 'cause he's, uh, on the construction side.
The heating units would be, uh, either natural gas or propane. Um, I don't know if they're gonna allow us to do natural gas. They have a main that goes through there, but it's a high-pressure main, so they have to come down from the street. So it may, it may wind up having to be propane, uh, heat, but we don't know that yet. So we're working on, um, whether we'll get natural. But all the heaters are hung, uh, wall heaters that are inside. Uh, the air conditioning units, if we decide to do them, would be on the backside, um, on a flat slope on the, uh, even though the roof is pitched, there'll be a flat, uh, surface thing because there'll just be a, a small, um, unit similar to like any house would have for each unit.
How about a generator?
A generator, um, we're probably not gonna put as an original thing because, um, it's really not like an office complex or a medical facility. It's really more for, um, contractor base or whatever it may be. So if electricity goes out, well, they may be without. But as of right now, no, there's no plans for a generator.
Um, go back to, uh, I'm gonna make some, uh, general, or several general, general comments a little later on, but, um, I'm looking at the, uh, notice of decision for an application for a variance stated March fourteenth from the ZBA. And the, it says the variance request is to allow for a fifteen, I assume it says, should say feet, fifteen-foot front setback and a five-foot rear setback exclusive. And in the decision, it states that the, the ZBA voted unanimously to grant the variance of a front setback fifty feet to allow for a fifteen-foot front setback. So I think I asked this question at the last meeting. How many feet back is the front of the building from the street?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Aho was correct, it does vary. Um, so, let me see. So we have. I don't have a dimension on this plan. Um, it is greater than thirty feet, approximately thirty-five feet to this tightest corner. It's, the tightest spot is somewhere in this area.
So that's, that's thirty-something feet from the edge of the pavement?
Correct.
And how many feet from the, uh, public right-of-way line?
Uh, fifteen feet.
It is fifteen feet?
Correct, yes.
So from the, the fifteen, excuse me. So fifteen feet south of that edge of pavement is owned by the town?
Uh, approximately, yes.
Okay. But you intend to put your front, part of your front yard, part of that thirty feet front yard would be owned by the town?
Correct, yes, yep.
And you went over that with the DPW?
Yes, yeah, we went, we sat down with the DPW and went over the plan with them during a meeting. And that was prior to the department meeting that we had had, and they were also in attendance for that.
Yeah. Was there any discussion about the, uh, existing trees on the town land?
Um, not with the DPW, no.
I think you should make a note that you need to do that. The previous proponent moonscape the, uh, site, including taking down mature trees on the town, uh, land. And, um, since then, some of them have grown back and is far from mature, but they're on their way. So that's one thing that we need to look at. Um, so the application talks about two buildings. Construction of two separate buildings consisting of ten units in each building. And of course, Fuss and O'Neil picked up on that in their comments. And the, uh, ZBA decision seems to be silent relative to one building or two buildings.
That's correct. So that, that's a typo on the application. Um, it should be one building. With the ZBA, we, we had gone before them, um, I believe they, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they haven't made a decision yet, um, because I believe that's a special permit to get two buildings on one lot. We wanted to get before you first because we would prefer to have one building. But, um, if you would prefer two buildings to have it broken up, then we could go that route. So that's why the ZBA has been silent on that so far. So once we get further along with this, then we'll go back to the ZBA for a special permit, if that's required. They've continued that hearing for now.
So how many applications? So we're looking at a building permit application that's attached. That's the building department that mentions two separate buildings.
Uh, yeah, so what, what we had done originally when we went to the ZBA was, um, you, you, you were required to have a special permit for two buildings. Um, so we looked at that as the highest threshold. So we didn't know if the town, like, we'd prefer, like Bill said, to do one building. We didn't know if we got before the planning board, if you guys would say, well, we'd actually preferred you to have it as two buildings. And then we would have had to go back to ZBA, 'cause you, obviously you don't need a special permit for one building, but you do for two. So we kinda went the hardest route with them and proposed the two. Um, but like Bill said, they, um, they extended, um, the special permit portion just because of the, the use part of it. And that ended up, that was a special permit, not a variance, the two buildings. So all of the special permit items just ended up getting extended and getting pushed and not, um, not, uh, like a decision wasn't made on them, and that was, that was one of them. So we're open to, you know, two or one, you know, our preference is one. But we wanted to, you know, have some flexibility if the board had a strong opinion another way.
Okay. Fire chief. Fire department submitted a, a note, a letter dated, uh, May twenty-first. And it talks about the numbering. Says here, while the east building should be number one fifty-four and the west one fifty-six, the new building plan calls for an office attached, attachment connecting the two buildings. What will the office addresses be? So I don't expect you to give me the answer tonight because I can tell you that I have seen site plans more, uh, fragmented and more poorly, uh, presented, but not recently. And in my opinion, uh, it's between the comments from Fuss and O'Neil, the fire department, and the planning board tonight, and the answers that we're getting, and the materials that we have in front of us. It's extremely difficult, at least for me, and this isn't my first site plan, to figure out what we're being asked to approve. So, um, I guess what I would suggest, and it sounds like sometimes when some of these questions are asked, um, you ask the town planner what the answer is. So I would suggest that, we'll open this up to the public tonight if there's any questions or comments, but, um, and if you listened to the town planner's chronology of when the application was submitted, uh, and when we received the comments from the, uh, peer review consultant, um, it would, it would indicate that the application should not have been accepted because the materials are, um, so deficient. We have, uh, plans that, that don't match each other. Not clear which plan you want us to look at. It just mentioned that if we want two buildings, we can have two buildings. If we want one building, we can have one building. Normally the way it works is you submit what you want to build and then we'll, we'll comment on that. But what you're, what you've submitted here is, is difficult to follow. So I would suggest, um, that you come back with a pure, clean set of conforming documents, uh, that we can clearly understand and, and, uh, work on. You know, the planning board approved a, a building on the site several years ago. So it's not like we're looking for, um, to have you sent, sent away, we wanna work with you. But, um, we gotta get this cleaned up. Regarding the, um, twenty units of mixed use, and you've broken it down into four categories. The two-by-right, which is office and storage, and the two-by-special permit, which is private garage and light manufacturing. And then you've indicated, and I don't disagree with this, that it's probably overkill to have somebody sit there and babysit the building. But it's also, uh, of great concern to me anyways, and I intend to have a discussion with the building inspector on this. Um, to have somebody know what goes on in these units, uh, at, almost at all times. And to make sure that, uh, what's going on in any of them is, you know, compatible and safe for themselves and for their neighbors in, in the next unit or, or units. And I suppose there's a way to do it, and maybe the, uh, building inspector will give us some comfort as to how this can be managed and controlled. But it sounds to me like, you know, you'll rent a unit out and the guy will say, I'm gonna do landscaping. And, okay. And then nobody watches the guy. And next thing you know, you've got, um, fuel storage and fertilizers in the same area. Or you may have, uh, some, some other type of use where it's, it's a, uh, I don't, I'm not sure if an office use would also include, uh, an educational use. Where you would have an office-type setup, but you would have, uh, seminars or, um, training for different types of work. And how you would control all of that. So to me, it's, that, that, I could be being more, more overly cautious, but it just seems like this could be the Wild West where we have, uh, some potentially dangerous, uh, situation, not just with, uh, static things like, uh, fuel and fertilizer, but, uh, dynamic things like moving trailers and, uh, forklifts and, uh, pickup trucks and dump trucks, all trying to work at the same site. So I'd really, if, if there's a way that you can come back with a, a tighter, uh, method of managing and also maybe a tighter list of uses within those four categories. Or list of uses that would be specifically excluded, like children, anything that having to do with children. Doesn't seem to me that, um, you know, the site, or even animals. If somebody said, I wanna set up a, a grooming facility for, for dogs. Maybe it's fine, but it just seems to me that you've got, uh, the, the building offers such a huge flexibility, so from a marketing point of view, it's probably excellent. But from a management point of view and a safety point of view, we ha, I think we have to have a lot more knowledge of how it's gonna be operated and perhaps, um, more control either by the town, which I don't think is the right way to go, but have more control over it by someone so that, uh, it's, it can be watched and, and kept in compliance.
So just to, to speak to that, um, I, I would be managing it. Um, so every lease that goes in there would have, you know, allowed use, uh, meaning like if I was renting to somebody and their business was, you know, X, the lease would say what they're using the space for. Um, and it would obviously have to fit within the allowed uses from a zoning perspective. Um, and so how I was viewing this was, um, you know, if this, i- i- I view it just as an, as an industrial building. Um, it's in the IP zone, so, you know, the zoning aspect's a little bit different. But, you know, as far as construction and use, it's, it's essentially an industrial building. And typically in industrial zone, you know, you could have manufacturing, you could have warehousing. You know, it depends which town, obviously it could be a little different, but there are multiple allowed uses. And so that's how I was viewing here, saying, well, um, I, I want as, you know, a wider range of tenants as I can to be able to fill the building. Um, but from a management standpoint, it's, it, it doesn't help me if you wanna come there and rent some space, like, 'cause, you know, even back there, as far as the parking and, you know, even like the, it, it's not like we have a huge parking area. So even in the tenants coming in, it's, it's, you know, one of the jobs for me to do is even screen the tenants and make sure, okay, this tenant is gonna be a good fit for my project. Because if I have a tenant, you know, jamming up everything back there and it doesn't work for other tenants, you know, that could just be bad for business. Um, but as far as, you know, beyond that, I mean, it, it's a pretty straightforward industrial building. Like I, I've, I've sold and leased industrial properties in Metro West for like over ten years. Um, like, like I said, Maggiore has a building across the street, also in Southborough, one fifty-three Northborough Road. Might be one fifty-three and one fifty-five. And it's over ten times as big as this, and I don't think he has a management person on-site there. So it's just, in the industry, I don't, I don't think it's something that's, you know, like I said, when, when, when you write a lease, there is an agreement, this is what a person's allowed to do. And obviously, you know, if I happen to see them not doing what they're supposed to do, I could, you know, say something. But even if you're on-site, you're not typically walking through all your tenant spaces every day anyway. Um, so that, I, I honestly, you know, for a project this size, I'm, I mean, I think I would be incentivized to, and, and then also just as far as from a screening perspective, like Bill had mentioned. You know, the, the back is, is below the, the street. So the building is gonna screen a lot of it just from an aesthetic standpoint. And then it's from a functional standpoint, like I said, I'm gonna want the project to, you know, to be running smooth and not having tenants really turning it into the Wild West, 'cause, you know, I, I just, that probably wouldn't help me either.
We'll open it up to the public, any questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie from the Open Space Preservation Commission. And I just wanted to commend Planning Board member Mimi Latrell's concern about the native species. Our Open Space Preservation Commission has recently embarked on a native pollinator, native plant initiative, where we are going to be providing outreach and education. But we're looking for, not only on permitted ones, but throughout town, that native species of vegetation are used. There's overwhelming evidence that great benefits are achieved by using native species. And there are more and more species being commercially available. And also, I think the concern about not being roads-ready and salt-safe is lack of knowledge and not the lack of actual ability of native plants to be good street trees and street shrubs and street planting. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And I'm glad to hear the planning board is moving stronger in that direction. So, we look forward to seeing that plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you've looked at the deadlines, the major site plan deadline is July 14th. And the one for the special permit for the lower-impact development is August 13th. Our next meeting is July 9th, followed by... The 23rd. So, based on where we are with this, I happen to remember back in the 1980s when we approved Maggiore's project. It was 12 months, almost to the day it took for that site plan to be approved. Yes, it's a much bigger project. This one, we hope, will be below that. But where we are right now, it seems like July, the July 14th, if you... I would suggest that you request an extension of the approval period for the major site plan to at least match up with the lower-impact development date, which would be August 13th. That would allow July 9th and July 23rd. And our August 6th meeting would have three meetings between now and the end of that approval period. So, extending the site plan to match up with that may simplify things. If you don't want to do that tonight, that's fine. But this would be the point in the meeting where you could request that, which would be to extend the approval period for the site plan from July 14th to August 13th.
And that's just your deadline to file your decision? Or do you want to not see us again until August?
Oh, no. We'll... No. If you want, if you don't want to come back until August, tell us now. If you want to come back on July 9th with revised plans, much easier to understand submittal, then we will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to July 9th.
And your meeting after the 9th is the 23rd?
And if we see that progress is being made on the 9th, then we may continue, we may entertain a vote to continue the hearing to the 23rd, and then so on to the 6th. If the board sees that you're, no progress is being made, and that the board feels that you're incapable of moving forward, then the board would, could make a motion, a vote, to approve what you've submitted, approve what you've submitted with conditions, or to disapprove due to lack of information. So, a lot of options. But the way to go is, in my opinion, open to other suggestions, of course, but to continue the hearing to the 9th, with the understanding that you're going to come back with it cleaned up. But with that July 14th, with the July 14th current approval date, if something goes wrong on the 9th, then we're backed into a problem. So...
I understand.
Is it your request, then, to request a an extension of the approval period from July 14th to August 13th?
Yes. And I think we're trying to figure out what night we should ask for a continuance of the meeting to.
The 9th or the 23rd?
But I think the deadline to match up makes sense. That's August 13th.
So, the town planner will give you a form that we'll sign tonight. We'll vote on that now, your verbal request. And if the vote, if it passes, then we'll fill out the form, and you and I will sign it. And then that'll extend the approval period to August 13th for both the site plan and it'll match up with the special permit approval date. And then if you want to take a few minutes to decide if you want to continue the hearing to July 9th or to July 23rd, we can give you a few minutes for that.
Let me ask, before we have that conversation, whether my proposal on the traffic submittal meets with the board's acceptance. In other words, we're going to do crash data, trip generation, trip distribution. And I think that the regulation that was cited by your peer reviewer really just talked about requiring something to the effect... I'll just look up what they said. Section 174, 9A, for access to the site should not increase existing traffic by more than 10%. So, that's just a volume forecast. Does my proposal meet with your approval? We've got to get started on that in order to get ready for the next meeting.
Is that going to incorporate the school bus traffic that's going by that location?
It's going to be kind of hard to take a measurement of it now. We're past that season.
School's still in session.
Then we really need to move quickly.
You know, because that is the, quote, highway for the high school from Southborough over to Algonquin. Going right by there. I mean, from my perspective, if that's not included in there, I'm going to have to look at something that does. And that's one member's perspective.
I would also, I mean, that's the main roadway, other than Route 9, to Northborough from Southborough. So, I think the fair answer to your question is what you're proposing could satisfy. But we really won't know for sure until we see it.
Okay. Well, I duly noted that you want to see school bus information as well.
Well, there's a lot of traffic on that road going from Northborough to Southborough.
Well, the standard is whether we're going to increase that lot of traffic by 10% with 20 units. I don't think we're going to come anywhere close to that. But you have a standard in your bylaw, and we'll give you information to show that we were following that, including school buses.
Yeah, and I think from a safety perspective, too, where my concern is, is just knowing the real traffic that's going to go by there for the schools, both coming and going, you know, throughout the day. And maybe, I agree, it might not be, you're going to have a substantial impact to that. But depending on the businesses that go in there and the timing of things that go in and out of there, I mean, it could. If it's landscapers that are going in and out at the same time the school bus goes by at 6:45 in the morning, you know, or, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we'll pick the highest land use code in the ITE Trip Generation Manual, and we'll just stick with that number. So, whether it's office, light manufacturing, storage, or private garage, we'll pick the highest trip generator, and then we'll give you that number. And I'm confident it won't be over 10.
Knowing the history of the incidents of fatalities that have happened on that street, we can't, I mean, we can't ignore that.
Okay.
Mimi, opinion on the request for the traffic?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I do think that the school traffic should, to get a true read of the traffic on that road would have to be included. So, you have till June 25th.
Yeah, because it's not only the school buses.
It's graduations, so that makes me feel better.
You won't get the seniors in the traffic count, they're gone.
They'll get all the juniors taking their parking spots.
So, if we continue to July 9th, when we need the materials for that meeting? Because if we're going to have to hire an outside consultant to include school bus data with that, there might be some lead time. So, that would impact the decision.
Typically, at least a week before, because I have to distribute them to the planning board members.
I'm preparing a traffic engineer for trial right now, and I just did one two weeks ago. They're busier than you and me. I would say go to the 23rd. There's no point in coming back if I'm not ready. Can we continue this, then, Mr. Chairman, to the 23rd, with the board's permission?
We'll see how the vote goes. Right now, we have a request for an extension to August 13th. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion. We accept the request to extend the 154, 156 Northborough Road Major Site Plan Approval to August 13th, 2018.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made in second and discussion.
I just want to make sure there is no merit to extending to the 9th, just so we can have a check-in.
Yeah, I was actually... So, the next time we come, would the expectation be that everything had been taken care of?
That wouldn't be my expectation.
So, if that's the point, then I think it could make sense to come back on the 9th. If we could, you know, because we could show you, you know, what we've done, and if you had some comments, as opposed to just waiting, and then if you had those same comments at the next meeting, we'd just lose a meeting to address them, if that makes any sense. So, I mean, I...
I'm in agreement with what you're saying. So, that would be my suggestion. But, you know, it's up for discussion right now.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we've, in the past, even had cases where like, "Okay, we want to go as quickly as possible. We'll do the 9th. And if we can't, you know, give us a week's notice, like, "Oh, we're not going to be able to make it, we'll bump it out." You know, I think we're pretty flexible that way. It's not, I'm trying to work with you.
Yeah, I think Bill, I think a lot of the stuff, like Bill had said from a lot of the comments, it sounds like, you know, we could address those pretty quickly on the plan. And then, you know, like the traffic study, it sounds like that's, you know, not going to be hit. But it sounds like we'd still have some things to talk about on the 9th. So, I would say that that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, just one other thing about the plan. I know the chairman talked a bit about it, but I would like to see that the lighting plan actually matched the new design that you have with the parking so that's clear. Because like Mimi was saying with the, with the planting one, I didn't even look at that because I was like, it doesn't even line up with what you did.
Yeah, we can do that, and then I'll just take out all the alternative plans. So, it's just one plan of each, and, you know, like the chairman had suggested. Originally, the idea was if we had come before, because we weren't doing it both simultaneously, the ZBA and the planning board, if the planning board had said, "We want two buildings versus one," then we would have to go back to the ZBA, assuming that they hadn't continued that. So, long story short, we can just pick a path and go with it.
It seems like the confusion has become contagious because the motion on the floor is to grant you an extension, and we're talking about landscaping. So, this is all good discussion, but I'm trying to keep, at least I'm trying to keep some order here so that we move appropriately. So, the motion on the floor is to grant the extension of the approval period for the site plan to August 13th. Any more discussion on that?
Just, so, but the, having said that, the plan is to actually have this as an agenda item on July 9th. Okay, got it. No more discussion then from me. Thank you.
All in favor? Order zero. So, you, before you leave, will fill out the form that captures what we just voted on in extending it.
Thank you.
Now, the next thing is, you've got the green light. I didn't comment on it, but I agree with my board members that if you do what you're proposing to do relative to the traffic and are able to capture the traffic counts relative to the school buses and the private cars from the students at that hour of the morning zooming to Algonquin, the chances are that that'll give us some sufficient comfort. And we would, of course, share that with the public safety people to see if it matches up with what they think. So, you've got the green light on the traffic. You've got the extension on the site plan approval. Now, the next thing is to decide if we're going to continue the public hearing to July 9th or another date. Yeah, town planner's reminding us that even if you get us all the materials a week beforehand, we have to beam them over to Fussin' O'Neill. And as you said, things are busy. So, chances are, we would not have the comments back for us at all, or insufficient time for us to review the comments and you to review them.
It's the nightmare Fourth of July week because the Fourth is on a Wednesday. So, half the world will take off, the first half of the week, and the other half will take off the second half of the week.
And the third half will take off the whole week.
There you go.
So, are we talking ourselves into the 23rd?
I already talked myself into it. But it depends really on how much, I don't think you're going to have anything here by way of traffic because you're losing a week. You have to get a week... I understand that. So, the question is how much Bill can do on this long list.
Yeah, so, we've made good progress on it in the past few days. And I think we could get, we could probably get something out in two weeks. But I'm not sure if having two weeks from the time of the hearing to when the reviewer gets it would be enough to get comments back, given that the week before the hearing is almost going to be lost. If you would like, we could push it to the 9th. And as you had suggested, we could call the week before. If it's not going to be, doesn't seem like we'll have comments back or anything to discuss, then we could push it off to the 23rd.
When that, if that were to happen, the planning board would have to show up on the July 9th to vote to continue the hearing to another date. You would not have to show up. So...
Do you have anything else on your agenda?
We do, but it's something, it's things that could be pushed to the 23rd also.
Joel just told me that he'd be comfortable moving to the 23rd, if that's your preference.
It's your option. You tell us. We occasionally have lives, but we have, you know, had these situations where you are, I think, are being a lot more open than some of the proponents that come in, and they say, "Oh, no, we're going to be ready on the 9th." And then on the 8th, they say, "We're not, we're not..." We find out they're down the Cape, and they don't want to come. So, they send a letter or an email saying, "Can you continue the public hearing to the 23rd?" They're down the Cape, and we're here, taking a five-minute vote and then going back to wherever we may have had a life. So, that's good.
I think if we go to the 23rd, that will give us sufficient time to get everything in and get review comments, make sure that we're on track and have something to discuss.
So, it's your request to continue the public hearing to July 23rd at 7:00 PM and 7:05 PM for the lower-impact development special permit?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mills?
I make a motion. We continue the public hearing for 154 and 156 Northborough Road Major Site Plan Approval to July 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? That's for the site plan. All in favor? Four to zero. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 154 and 156 Northborough Road, special permit, lower impact development, for July 23rd at 7:05 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. One more thing. When you come back, we'd like to have a full-size set of whatever you're submitting for the table, so that we can look at it on the table. The half sizes are okay, but we need a full size. We're at the point where we really need to see what's being proposed, properly scaled, fully coordinated set of plans, lighting, landscaping, utilities, grading, details of the building. We saw the details of the building at the last meeting. We didn't see them today with the bathroom and that type of stuff. So we'd like to have all of that, full size. One set, any, one set, Karina?
No, I think we need-
Mr. Jackson's gonna want his own.
Yeah, I think we need six-
This elderly member needs a full size.
One for each planning board member and one for record. That'd be helpful, because people can view the one at the planning, the public can come and view my set. We may also need, or do you provide, you have to provide electronic?
You have to provide electronic files. We can possibly satisfy most of the departments by emailing that to the departments, but the board of health generally likes a full-size set as well, and possibly the building department. So I would make that eight full size.
Just make 10 of them, call it a day.
And nine half size.
Nine half size.
You might as well throw the half size in, in case they don't want email, then you'll be ready. If that varies, the half size. The full size, definitely, the eight sets, six, seven, eight. Half size, I can confirm how many with Joel within the next day or two, because I don't like to generate extra paper either, so.
Very good. We'll see you on the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to go print up one of those.
All right, yes. Who's gonna sign? Okay. You're all welcome to stay. So, Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? The purpose of the two-minute recess is to let the town planner go and print up the form that we need to sign for the extension. See you in two minutes. All in favor? See you in two minutes.
Planning Board is back in session after a two-plus-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, Forty-Three Lovers Lane. I'll ask the Town Planner to give us the background on this one. Karina.
Okay, we received an application from Mr. Benjamin Keyes, represent-- is it Keyes or Kais?
Kais.
Kais, sorry. Representing the Labrie Fellowship located at Forty-Three Lovers Lane. The A and R was filed on May twenty-first. The Planning Board has twenty-one days to act, which means the deadline for action will be June eleventh, two thousand eighteen, if everything's in order. When the plan was submitted, it was actually shown as one large lot, Forty-three, and we discovered that there was actually number forty-one, Lovers Lane, that had been previously A and R'd in the nineties, sometime in the eighties.
Nineteen ninety-five, I think.
Nineteen ninety-five. So Ben took the plans back and made some revisions along with some additional comments I had after reviewing the plan, having the proper notes, making sure the addresses were correct, showing the wetlands, the approximate wetlands, any stone walls, anything that's on the formal application instructions to show. So he then resubmitted and refiled it on this last date, the May twenty-first. I did a review of the plan. It showed sufficient frontage and areas, and basically the request is to take the old property line. You'll see a house to the top right of the plan, number forty-three. There's an old property line right here. This was previously A and R'd, and they basically want to remove this and move it to this new line.
So go back and say that into the microphone.
Oh, okay. So the original A and R property line in the southeast corner is proposed to be moved to a new line that splits the lot right there. So essentially, just moving that lot line over.
That's right.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kais, good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Did you want to add anything to that? I'm going to open it up to the questions from the board, but if you wanted to.
Sure. Not particularly. I think Town Planner gave the basic idea, yeah. Just one note, the lot that we are wanting to basically remove is on your plan. It's lot number one B. That was in nineteen ninety-five. The organization I work for, the Labrie Fellowship, did decide to have this work done with the possibility of selling it someday. That's no longer our desire, and so there's no reason to have that. We were just hoping that we would be able to draw this new property line and get rid of this mess all in one go. And so the new lots would be, the one that we've drawn that abuts four ninety-five there would be lot one A two, and then the existing lot, the Forty-Three Lovers Lane address, would be one A one. But that's, I think that's all. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
We'll see if we can stump you.
That'd be great.
Mr. Mills.
In memory or keeping in mind Mr. Jenks, I see that there's enough frontage.
Mm-hmm.
So I have no questions.
Mr. Stein.
No questions.
Mrs. Latrell.
Just curious, what are you going to do with that lot that you're?
Yeah, we are in the process of considering that. We have been using it for a number of different reasons. My kids go back and play back there. There's a brook. We also, because the Labrie Fellowship burns a lot of firewood, we've selectively cut firewood back in that area. Our intention is to, and what we're hopefully going to be moving forward on, is to convey it to Southborough Open Land Foundation for a number of reasons, one of which is, I believe, it will actually provide us with better use of that lot if Solf has some oversight over it. We will be most likely involving some deed restrictions to allow us to have some use of it still, but, yeah. It's something that we've been considering for a number of years, and I just wanted to move forward on it and hopefully get rid of, just take care of the old lot at the same time, so.
Thank you. No further questions.
Open it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the A and R request for Forty-Three Lovers Lane as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero.
I have the plans and a signature form. If we can do that at the end of the meeting, would you mind stopping by tomorrow to pick it up?
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that work for the board?
It does. Thanks, Mr. Kais.
Thank you.
Thanks for being so patient.
It's all right.
Next item on the agenda is another A and R. This one is at Seventeen Ward Road. Well, that's the Town Planner to give us the background on this one.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Is there anybody here for Seventeen Ward? For the record, this A and R was submitted last week, filed on the May thirty-first, which was Thursday. I reviewed it. I expressed that the surveyor should attend this evening to answer any questions. Seventeen, let's see, let's get the screen up on the stage two, sorry, up on the screen. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So the Frontage Road is Ward. I got a, the applicant is asking to subdivide an existing lot, which is in the residential zone, into two lots. I did review the frontage and the areas, and they seem to comply. Mr. Jenks called me today to ask regarding the jog in the town's right-of-way on the road to confirm that to confirm that this corner right here was not actually part of the Abutter Kennedy's property. I looked it up on the Southboard GIS and on the assessor's map, and it indicates that that's part of Ward Road, the public right-of-way, so it's okay to be considered for frontage because it is, you know, roads often jog that way. When the plan was initially submitted, I returned it to the surveyor to add the notes explaining what they were planning to do, dividing the lots, the purpose of the plan, and then also specify the word "frontage" so that it was clear, not just with the marks there. The surveyor is a licensed surveyor. They did show the wetlands and stone walls, if there were any. So I didn't receive any other comments from Phil, since he can't be here, but that's all I had.
Very good. No one's here to answer any questions? Any questions or comments of the Town Planner, Mr. Mills?
No, I think she answered the one I proposed to you on the side, so.
Mr. Stein.
None here.
And Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you, Karina. That was my question, so I have no further question.
So the only thing that we're doing here is adding the line that says two hundred and forty-five point zero seven feet.
That's correct. I can show you the assess, the current GIS map, so it's very clear.
That's okay.
Good?
Yeah. And that fifty-five point four feet from the nearest part of the house far exceeds the side lot line requirement.
It does. The side yard setback is twenty-five feet.
Yeah. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the A and R request for Seventeen Ward Road as submitted.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. Is this another one we'll sign after the, before we leave?
Yes, I have the signature form and the plans we can sign after.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion, Open Space Inspections Program. Mass Autobahn presentation, sample inspection form, which we have in front of us, right?
At a previous meeting, I just want to update you that we had given you the sample location template forms, so I didn't reprint them for the packages again, but we do have them to show on the screen. And in the meantime, we've also received completed forms for five locations that the inspections were actually performed on. Also, I passed out right before the meeting a memo from Freddie Gillespie from the Open Space Preservation Commission with some comments on our template form, which we received this afternoon. So forgive me, I haven't had a chance to really vet these comments, but we will read them over the next two weeks or so and see if anything needs to be incorporated into the finalized forms. But again, this evening, two representatives from Mass Autobahn, we have Amber Carr and Ryan Brown. And we've been working over the past year to come up with a template to do open space inspections in a program so that in the future, we can build on this with an idea, maybe do twenty or twenty-five percent of the open space parcels every year, get a baseline document, and then, you know, we just rotate through so that at least every few years properties would, those parcels would be looked at to see if there were any encroachments, if everything's going well, just a general idea, nothing threatening or anything like that, just so the town has a sense of their, their asking for these open spaces, and they just need to be monitored a little bit and followed up on and just made sure what status they're in, otherwise it's, doesn't really help to have open space if anything gets done on them in the long run. So Amber and Ryan are here to talk about what they did and what they saw in their inspections and maybe give us any advice on how to make improvements on the forms or what you found might work better and just generally on the project. And eventually, we'll get a kind of a memo report from them, just outlining the whole process and their findings.
So what we're doing now compares to what we were doing before, and what we were doing before is nothing. There were no inspections.
Correct. Only if somebody called something in, I believe, or if something stood out or something happened to pick it up. Now this would be like an official, just, you know, just clear, a clearinghouse. Every few years, you rotate through all the parcels just to make sure everything's working the way it should.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Which office are you guys out of?
So we're out of Mass Autobahn's Lincoln office, but we're with the Ecological Extension Service, which is essentially an environmental consulting branch of Mass Autobahn. So instead of working within our sanctuary system, we provide services that we've developed managing our land to outside conservation partners like yourself.
This is, we've had other contracts with you before.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, okay, you're on.
Great. So like Karina said, I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we developed the open space monitoring forms. So one of the things that came up in our initial meeting was that it was uncertain as far as who would be performing these monitoring inspections in the future, and so we wanted to be mindful that it might not always be a contractor doing them with access to services like GIS software. They might be just community members or volunteers that have no more technology access than just taking a piece of paper in the field and drawing, hand-drawing on it. We wanted it to be a system that could be used by basically anyone. So we took two forms that we have. One is the one that Mass Autobahn uses, which is just a very quick form with property information, land owner information, the site overview as far as what was found in the field, conditions that were seen, and then photos and GPS information with a map. Ryan worked previously with the Menadnot Conservancy to do monitoring inspections, and so he actually got us a copy of the form that they use, and we kind of compiled both of these two forms to fit your needs as best that we could. And so, and this is still under revision. As we've gone out in the field, we've noticed a few things that needed tweaks, and so any additional comments, either from the Southborough Open Land Foundation or from you guys, is easily incorporated into the final product, so no worries there. But basically, we thought that the first bucket of information should be focused on who's actually conducting the inspection, so the name of the monitor, their information, if you had any follow-up questions after they had been at the site the last time that site had been inspected, and then when it's due again. So anyone looking through these forms can easily see when it's up for reinspection. Then you have the property information. So I think Donald mentioned that we've had contracts with you guys before, and I assume he's mentioning Jeff Collins and Hannah Lyons-Galante, who compiled all of your open space information into a database. And so the property information section is really taking the information from that database and putting it right in this form, so you can easily see where that information is located. You can go in the database and have it accessible very quickly at your fingertips. Open space requirements, so our understanding was that you have different types of open space. Usually, it's a dedicated lot, ten percent of the total, or the other. It's a random other option, and so we wanted that to be mentioned on the data sheet as far as what type of open space, whether it's forested, really an athletic field or park open, how maintained it was, whether it was truly natural or regularly managed. And then we get into the site conditions, so what was actually seen, whether there is construction or dumping or any physical damage like rutting of tires, invasive plants, insect infestation, and then a general comment section because you never know what you're going to find. The fourth section would be photos, so anytime there was an encroachment or anything of interest, photos would document what was seen, the map or plan of the site, so either using the actual plan and showing the direction walked and where each encroachment was seen, or some aerial photo-type map, or even a hand-drawn map if that's all that the inspector has available to them, and then any notes. And so Ryan actually, he works with me at the Extension Service, and he was the one who went out in the field to inspect five sites that were determined between Karina and us as far as what would be the best fit to demonstrate the types of open space that currently are represented in Southborough. And so he tried to pull sites that represented each of those types. You kind of get an overview or a concept of how it would be applied to all sites in Southborough. So he inspected those. He'll go over what he found in the field, and then after he's finished, we'll just talk about how we'll incorporate these forms into the already established database and how to move forward for the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Amber. If you don't mind bringing up Barn Hollow, that is the first property that I visited. So on my visit, Barn Hollow is a, well, first off, it's located off of Fisher Road and includes both Barn Lane and Muck Lane, and it is a dedicated lot that is seven point six acres. The map's on the, yeah, just one more screen up. So, yeah, there's a, basically the plan, and I printed it out, highlighted the open space. That's the dedicated lot. As you can see, it's around the perimeter. And the arrows and dots indicate where I've, where I went along the open space. The dots with the V fan shows a photograph direction, and it shows also the photograph number. So most of what I encountered on the property in terms of man-made alterations were usually just dumping sites from lawn debris, items such as Christmas trees, lawn clippings, old plant potters, some random pieces of trash, and some boards. There was a random propane tank inside of a plastic crate. But aside from that, there was no. But aside from that, there was no, uh, new constructions or any, like, red flags that would demand immediate attention. Uh, in terms of natural alterations to the site, I did encounter, uh, what appeared to be water erosion from a piece of mulched landscape. The day previously, there was heavy rain. So whether that was a cause from the heavy rain or somehow, um, like a sprinkler system was broken, um, that's to be determined. And in general, the site was just very abundant with all types of invasives, such as garlic mustard, bittersweet, uh, bush honeysuckle, and glossy buckthorn. In terms of accessing the property, it was relatively easy. I was able to park off of Fisher Road and just enter the property, um, through its southern, uh, easement area. And of course, it was just loaded with poison ivy. I was fortunate I didn't get any ticks on me. So just in the future, whoever visits these sites just needs to be mindful of, um, that it was pests. And no one went out and questioned me, or I didn't encounter any of the residents, or anyone working the landscape there. Any questions so far?
And just to point out, we did send out letters to, um, ahead of time, letting the people who might see them walking around.
Yes, and I carried a copy of that with me too, in case someone approached me and just inquired about what I was doing there.
With, uh, Karina's information to call to ask if they had any questions.
Yes.
Not us.
So, um, maybe this applies to all of them, but, you know, you found the boards someplace, and you found a propane tank or a Christmas tree somewhere else. It would seem that if you sent a letter to the property closest to the Christmas tree, they may say, "I didn't do that." So would it be appropriate to send this one, this report to the same people that you sent the initial letters to, announcing that you, you were gonna do the inspection, and now sending them the results of the inspection? And including in the letter, something like, um, please, uh, do what you can to keep additional, to, to clean it up, and to keep, uh, additional, uh, foreign trash from... I know if I was, if I was, if I did it, I'd say to myself, gee, if I do this again, I'm gonna get caught. I just gonna get picked up again. And if I didn't do it, I keep my eyes out for somebody that is doing it.
So, um, from my experience, towns will deal with the follow-up in slightly different ways, or the conservation organization that's in charge of following up on any, uh, encroachments that are seen. What Mass Audubon usually does is a phone call. So they identify the lot, um, they have that information, or they might do a letter. But they contact them each individually and specifically mention what was seen on their property, as opposed to giving them the full report just because some people just don't always pay attention if it's lengthy versus what's applicable to them. But, um, that would ultimately be up to whatever you guys are comfortable doing.
And I just want, in this case, like Barn Hollow, the town owns that
Right.
property. And, um, and just to go back a little, we may not have notified these abutters. We notified the property owner right now. So like, for example, Hidden Meadows, which was another example, there, the open space is actually part of the individual privately owned parcels. So we notified those abut, those actual, you know, the property owners were the open spaces on the property. For this one, we did not go and notify all the abutters. But that could be a step, if there's, you know, a certain level of encroachment, we could take on that format to somehow let the people who are doing the encroaching, like you said. But just to clarify, right now, we just notified the property owners, so...
So, maybe it's, maybe it's late for me. So since they don't, ever, all the abutters don't own the land, did we notify all the abutters that this happened?
Not at Barn Hollow.
Not at Barn Hollow.
Because they're not, the open space is not on their property. But that could be, um, you know, we're cre, I'm creating this binder that has each of the properties. And we, in there, I keep a list of the property owner. But we could also do a secondary list that shows the immediate abutters. So we have an immediate label list that we could just pop a one-page letter out to them at forty-seven cents a letter.
But you said earlier that you notified somebody in the neighborhood, so that if they saw you...
Yes, we did do that.
Who'd you notify?
So, for example, um, of the five locations, we had, um...
Uh, we don't need the names, but...
No, no, but, like Hidden Meadows, Killen Farms, La Hay Estates, those were in Chestnut Meadow. So La Hay Estates had two property owners with open space on their property. They were both notified, because they...
So when you made that statement earlier that you notified people, it applied to all five, not just this one?
Correct. We notified the property owners
Okay.
of the open space. That's what I want to clarify.
Okay.
So we didn't notify all the abutters. We didn't get to that point. But it's not unreasonable, because...
So there was no grill attached to the propane tank, I assume?
Right. Yeah. It was just deposited at the edge of the property, the boundary between the open space and, um, the person's residence.
Still there?
To my knowledge, yes.
I would definitely be in favor of notifying them some way. At least definitely about that. I mean, it'd take a long time for that to decompose.
Yeah, so, the next step would be, how, what do we do with this information? So right now, we wanted to have a baseline of what is happening to the open space. Right? So, um, and that was the scope of this project. So next, this next fiscal year, we've dedicated some funds to come up with another, um, contract proposal to continue the process to build on this. And whether it's, um, part of it I can envision is to incorporate a next step to try and, how do you address when you find a problem? What do we do? And the other part is to add some more locations to inspect. So that we can keep building the baseline information using the prior deed research data, which has been very helpful. So that eventually, we have a book of open space, and someone can take this and say, okay, these ten are up for inspection. They can go out, they can document any changes. But it's true, an important part is now, what do you do with the information? So we have to come up with a, we'll brainstorm and come up with a next phase.
Have you talked to all of the open space committee about how...
We've submitted, all this information, except for the complete forms, has gone to the open space. And I know that, um, Freddie herself was kind of busy during the annual town meeting. You know, she put a lot of effort into that. So, um, we envision that we continue to communicate with open space preservation. And we're trying to get any feedback we can. And we, we val, value all their comments when they come back. So we just got these new comments on the template, which we'll review and see how that impacts what we've done to date. Um, but I can definitely see where the next part of this is going is, okay, anyway, now we have what's going on, what do we do with it? You know, we just want, we don't want to just stick it away either. Say, okay, we looked at it, you know, but if there's a tank out there, if it's full, that might be hazardous, or whatever. What's the next step? So, maybe that can, some ideas can be put into a summary in your final memo report.
Certainly.
So let's move on to the next one.
All right.
Before we go too far, um, just about the notification piece? Or am I going up? So Mimi, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. When we did the GIS survey with the CPC, I think you were on the Open Space Committee at the time?
I remember, there was a lot of debate back and forth with the selectmen about what we're gonna do with the information that we get about encroachments and things like that. And that was a big, uh, discussion point, and they wanted to be involved in how that got communicated, correct? And I think, I, I don't recall how that ever ended, the GIS surveys, encroachments. Am I opening up a big can of worms?
No, I think you're right. But if it's town-owned property, I wonder if notifying the board or selectmen would be the first order of business.
I'm not, I'm not trying to make it, I mean, I think we've identified some things that, you know, were concerning enough that we should take action one way or the other.
Right.
But I just want the rest of the board to be aware that when we went down this path with the CPC and the GIS surveys and encroachment and everything, the selectmen, at that time, were very involved and concerned about the way the encroachments were addressed with abutters. I think it's only fair to put that out there.
Ryan? All right. Uh, so the next proposit, uh, property I visited, um, was Chestnut Meadow. And, uh, this was a relatively new property, and it wasn't in the deed research that Audubon did, uh, with the town in Southborough. So it doesn't have a Audubon ID number. And this is a, uh, has two dedicated lots. And at this moment, the property is completely undeveloped. It's basically just a big open field, um, with no, you know, construction going on at the moment. So accessing it was very easy. Uh, just pulled off of Chestnut Hill Road and just started walking the property. So at the moment, it is, again, an open field, um, with some edge habitat and some wetland. The wetland is, uh, the northern edge, yes. No, it's just, um, map position, sorry. And the two dedicated, um, open space lots are five and six, I believe. Uh, so they're kind of kitty-cornered next to the wetlands there. Uh, but there is an open space easement running along the perimeter of it, and the two dedicated lots expire in three years. So I imagine it'll transition to the easement running around the perimeter. During my visit to that site, uh, there wasn't much in the way of, uh, manmade encroachment. There was a pile of debris and associated, um, tire tracks leading up to it. So if you wanna pan down, that's the pile of debris and the tire tracks and rutting. But aside from that, uh, there is a old chain, chain link fence running along the southern boundary, um, between those watershed protection area, uh, next door. But the fence is all overgrown with bittersweet at the moment. And yes, in addition to the bittersweet, there was just, uh, lots of bush honeysuckle and garlic mustard on the property. And with any field environment, uh, future visitors to the site should just be mindful of ticks. Uh, so that concludes Chestnut Meadow. Uh, any questions regarding that?
Next.
All right. Uh, the next is, uh, La Hay Estates, uh, which is Audubon ID number twenty-two. Uh, and this is located off of Mulberry Road and includes seventy-four and seventy-six Mulberry Road. And so this, uh, includes a twelve-foot wide open space easement running around the perimeter of the development. Uh, the current condition, uh, is woodland forest. There is a sizable portion of forest, um, the northern part of the property. If anyone's been to the site, it's basically like a very steep hill and two houses, and then the road. So it's the house, steep hill, and then mostly woods in the back. In terms of manmade alterations, uh, there is some encroachment, I would say, along the, um, next to the abutters. Whether, if you wanna just scroll up a bit. So, down a little, right there. So it's supposed to be twelve feet wide, and this is looking down, um, the easement between the two houses. So it seems kind of encroached upon in terms of landscaping, but, uh, I guess to be determined. And there was a unused, appears to be a drainage culvert, um, next to the stone wall. If you want to just scroll down again, there's a photo of that. So there it is. Uh, and that falls within the twelve-foot wide easement space. Uh, in terms of natural alterations, um, the steep hill is not really forested. So I imagine if there's a heavy rain at some point, it would be prone to erosion. As well as, there's an abundance of burning bush, uh, bush honeysuckle, and nutweed on the property. And during this visit, no one approached me, uh, even though I was, like, basically in their house at that point. But, um... So La Hay Estate, um, Chestnut Meadow, and Barn Hollow, I were able, I was able to visit, uh, within, uh, one day. And La Hay Estate was a very small property, so it took me fifteen minutes to walk it and document it with the photos. And, um, Chestnut Meadow and Barn Hollow, being slightly larger, it took me about an hour, as well as they're more thickly wooded and shrubby in general, so...
An hour each? Or an hour total for both of those?
An hour each for, uh, Barn Hollow and Chestnut Meadow. And I've included that in the, uh, notes section, uh, section six within the document. Uh, any questions with La Hay Estate?
I assume you've done this a lot?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
So the encroachments that you've seen, would you consider them minor?
Yeah, um, like, they're not dumping, like, radioactive waste or anything, or like, any significant hazard to the property owner or anyone visiting the property.
Okay.
I think the propane tank would probably be the one that you would want to take action on, but everything else that was seen, um, noted, but not necessarily actionable. Some of the bigger encroachments that we've come across is people building like a swimming pool or a patio on open space area. But we didn't see any of that, so...
Right, or actively, like, cutting trees in the open space. And then, like, selling it or burning things like that, so...
Did you measure at all from, like, the distance? Like that last one, it looked like there was a, uh, septic cap or something that was close to the...
In La Hay Estate here?
Yeah.
Um, no, I didn't measure the distance.
Just wondered.
Uh, I mean, that is also, this is, uh, the reports are for people who might not necessarily have, again, access to, you know, GIS information, so...
I just wondered. Saw it in the picture, that's all.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to Hidden Meadow. So Hidden Meadow is, uh, located off of Middle Road and consists of a twenty-foot, uh, twenty-five-foot wide open space easement that runs around the perimeter of the development. Um, the current condition of the open space is mostly woodland, forest, and wetlands. Oh, yeah, and, uh, for the next two properties, um, I was just curious about using GPS tracking, um, just for my own, um, validation, I guess, to see how closely I could follow, uh, the boundary. Uh, and as you can see in that, uh, for the most part, I was able to follow it pretty easily, but there were a few occasions where, um, it wasn't apparent. For instance, in the bottom right corner. Yep. And, um, the big loop over there, there's big, um, wetland. So, uh, as much as I wanted to cross it, I decided not to. Uh, yes, um, north of the cul-de-sac there, yep. Um, and just, that's also something I keep in mind too, for possible future visitors to the site. There aren't a lot of monuments. There aren't a lot of monuments in these areas or necessarily like very clear delineation between open space and someone's backyard or another property altogether. So yes, accessing this open space easement was relatively easy. Access could be gained through the cul-de-sac there. It's a pretty low-traffic area. And again, no one came out to inquire what I was doing at the site. But I did park off of Middle Road. So the plan moved the open space easement to where it is highlighted. Originally, it was going through 184 Middle Road, so they just moved it further back. So that's where I began the property walk and just followed that course behind the houses.
I think you also added, there was a little piece added too on the secondary map.
I think the secondary map shows that transition, yeah. So this was just-
We recently did that.
Yes. And this was taken from, I believe, the South Borough GIS website, the map. Which is another source that future monitors could easily use. So along this side, or access point, there wasn't too much in the way of man-made encroachment. There was just some more lawn debris dumping with some fire ash, which potentially, if there was a hot ember still, but it didn't look too serious. And you can scroll up if you, if you will. And you can just see the debris pile. That's not on the property. That's next door. Yep, it's picture two. So again, pretty atypical, I would say, lawn clippings, broken limbs. And to the right by the tall tree in the corner, you can kind of see blackish coloration, and that's just the ash. So moving along, there was-
Are you sure that's ash, is not, someone wasn't burning?
It doesn't look like an active burn site. As you can see, there's green coming out of the ash. So I imagine someone dumped it there with the lawn debris at different times.
Thank you.
Yeah, and another odd encroachment, if you want to scroll down. Photos five and six show road. Basically entering into the kind of far corner of Hidden Meadow four. And it doesn't appear on any of the maps, but there is a an easement that does run between five and four Hidden Meadow Lane. And I'm not sure if that corresponds exactly with the road, but to my observation, it doesn't. So that's just very curious and there was no real kind of like usage for it.
Any tracks on the road?
It looks relatively fresh in terms of the vegetation that was cut. But to my knowledge, there was no active like running on that hillside. There is a trail, like an old access road, old dirt road, running on the hillside behind one, three, and five. But where the road enters, it does kind of correspond with that road. So I'm not sure if it's for fire access or whatnot. Again, there's no like sign-
Wait, did you see that road? Just show us on the-
So if you can see four right there and that blob to the left of four is a swimming pool. Nope, to the left, bottom left, yep. And so if you just follow where kind of like Peters out to where the arrows are, that's the rough approximation of where the road was.
Right there?
Yes.
So it just cut across the open space into the person's property?
Yes.
From where?
From the road on top of that hill line to the left of three and five.
Look, I could Google it and see what it is, if it's part of the trail system or anything.
Line with the propane tank that we'd probably want to ask what that was about personally.
Right, or if someone else in South Borough is doing something. But again, it is weird that it cuts across the easement and basically like they're able to access the property from that point. Yes. Moving on, in terms of natural alterations, again, pretty much the same suite of invasive species. In particular, the far corner of property four was basically like a monocrop of bittersweet. As well as there was presence of burning bush, glossy black thorn, and Norway maple on the property. No one came out to inquire again, and again, future visitors should be beware of ticks and poison ivy.
And all those property owners were sent a letter that they were coming out, that mass Audubon was coming out.
Do you wear waders when you do this? I know you talked before about there were wetlands and stuff. I mean, to keep the ticks off and everything, I'm just curious what-
For whatever reason, I've had a good luck of not getting ticks on me. But for this visit and the ones I've done in the past, right now, the water table isn't crazy high, so I was able to just kind of like get muddy. But for, you know, those who are doing it in maybe early spring or even winter, they should definitely look at the kind of topography of where the wetland is and whether the easement goes through it. Just to see if anyone's actually going into that swampland to do something.
I would say muck boots would be more appropriate than actual waders.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on Hidden Meadow Lane?
Did you find any monumentation there?
Yes. If you want to just jump back to Hidden Meadow. While I didn't encounter any along the actual easement, I did find this concrete bound, but it is off of the cul-de-sac area. And it's closest to the wetland.
So it's not an open space marker?
Right.
So you didn't find any open space markers?
Not on the path that I went.
Okay. And do we just do that?
There's a condition that says prior to conveying or constructing, prior to the property owner conveying the lot to somebody else or to start construction, they have to have those open space markers installed. And I did speak with Rebecca Franks about that, probably about two months ago, when she was submitting the recorded documents, and she is aware of that.
Okay.
All right, moving on to the fifth and final property, Killam Farm Estates. This is located off of Richards Road and consists of a dedicated 7.5-acre lot. And again, this is another visit that I used GPS tracking for myself. So as you can see, I started off in the cul-de-sac and made my way through a property owner's house. It's sort of awkward in terms of accessing this property because as you can see, it's banked by, I believe that's Route 90. And there's a row of houses off of Richards Road. And then if you were to go to the west, it's just basically capped by fencing. So you kind of rarely access it through there. So I parked in the cul-de-sac. And again, no one approached me or inquired during this visit either. So I made my way to the edge of the property. There's a stone wall there, so I just followed it north and began monitoring the property from there. Along this route, I didn't really encounter any, sorry. Yeah, its current state is wetland, woodland, and there is a moat section of kind of maintained lawn that corresponds to four houses off of Richards Road. If you want to scroll down to the map, the GPS map, please. Thank you. So you can see where the property, the open space dips, yes, and follows that line. And that's maintained grass. Whereas the rest of the property is wetland, woodland, and pretty much a natural state. In terms of man-made encroachment, typical dumping, landscaping, debris, lawn clippings. There was quite a bit of wooden debris dumped within the open space. At least three occasions along the abutments of both Killam Farm Estates and off of Richards Road. Yep, and that's an example of lawn debris, lawn clippings, and some random boards. This was just a picture of a fence that basically forms the boundary between two of the houses off of Killam Farm Estates and the open space. It's within their property. It was just curious. So whether they're using it for sound damping from Route 90 or just to, yeah, it's a ball, baseball-type thing. Yes, in terms of natural alterations, again, typical suite of invasive species. There was sort of a breakout patch of knotweed on the western edge of the property. But nothing too, too significant. Maybe just keep an eye on it and falls either within. That's where I deviated a little bit. This property was kind of hard to follow because there wasn't any like monuments to go by, except for one, which corresponded to the Shell Oil Easement. If you want to scroll up. And that's just a stone mound next to the wetland. Oh, keep going, please. Yep. There it is. Thank you. So that is the, pretty much the only monument I encountered on my path. There, within that kind of maintained lawn space, I did see that there's a trampoline, whether it's within or outside of the property, the open space. It, I mean, it's mobile, see? So basically between the barn on the right, which is the residence property, and the maintained grass on the left, which is the open space, so let's probably just move the trampoline. But aside, aside from the abundance of invasives and again, just a warning for ticks and poison ivy, that includes the Killam Farm visit and the sites I also visited. And Killam Farm and last one, Hidden Meadow, I did in the same day. Both took roughly an hour to visit and about maybe an hour, 45 minutes to write a report for each, so. Any questions with that?
The wood debris that you found at Killam?
Mm-hmm.
Not that you're an expert in age of wood, but does it look like it's fairly recent? Been there a while?
It looks weathered. Like, it doesn't have like a bright patina that you would see with like new wood, new lumber. But there's just a bunch of it, so whether, you know, we want to stop the person from making it a habit of dumping. And it doesn't look like new. As you can see, that palette is pretty kind of like grown into and even-
Is it like a fort? Like some kids were in there building something to play in?
No, it's definitely like a construct with nails and wood. And it actually looks like an old swing sweat, swing set, sorry. It's a swing set that one of the owners dumped there, whether a current or previous owner. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it is fairly obvious where it might have come from.
It's hard to tell whether, you know, someone just moved it over. But I would imagine whoever was closest to that boundary, that's where it came from.
Okay, thank you.
That Killam Farm open space, the town planner and I, and Mimi, you were there that day too. Yeah, a lot of that stuff's been there for a while. And when you did the walk, based on your pictures, if you went there before things started to grow, you would have seen a lot more junk. It's a farm, it's an old farm, and you know, there's evidence of, you know, that it was back, back part of the farm when they put the, when they put the mast pike in. And then if you look at the other side of the fence, the chain link fence that separates the property from the mast pike, you'll see on the mast pike side of the fence, more trash and debris from that, you know, from the mast pike, stuff falling off vehicles or whatever.
Yeah, within the open space along the highway, I didn't notice any like new debris, trash, or any kind of red flags. It's all kind of like atypical things that might have like blown in from the highway embankment.
Yeah, yeah.
But for future visitors, it's something to be mindful of too.
Right, that's a good, that was a good one to do because we are aware of that, the wood, the swing set, Christmas trees we found back in there. And, but that, the moat field, we're aware of that too, that the neighbors are all using it. It's kind of like a little, if they, if they're willing to mow it, then the town is willing to let the kids play there. We've seen a, wasn't there like a, there was an upright for a football or soccer at one time?
Yeah, I did see like posts, maybe like football-
Yeah.
Flag, you know? But yeah, it doesn't look like it's being like mistreated or abused in that sense. It looks maintained.
Yeah, that's one of the kinds of open space that, you know, the town likes. If the neighbors, neighborhood kids can use it, then it's still open space. Yeah. I guess I'll ask the public, Terry, if anybody has any questions or comments. Oh, I see there's one person. But he's not from the public, it's Sam. Did you have any questions, Sam? You got to get on the mic.
Sam Stivers, interested in the connection with the Open Space Preservation Commission. I've been going to their meetings for the last several years, hearing about concerns about this. So Karina, you said you've been working with them to come up with a questionnaire and communicating with them along the way on this?
Yes, working with them in the sense that I've been keeping information flowing in that direction. Haven't gone to the meetings. We haven't really sat together. Freddie's come to a couple of the meetings here where we discussed working on this, but no face-to-face hard time.
But you've not solicited input and they didn't participate in the questionnaire process originally?
Not, I don't think, well, I don't want to make it sound unfair because it's not really at a level. We formed the template, we sent the template out to conservation, open space, hoping to get some feedback. We got feedback from the planning board members, some minor comments, we adjusted. Freddie did provide us with some comments today. Again, she had been busy with the town meeting information when we were actually hot and heavy into this part of it.
What do you, what do you see as the role of OSPC in this going forward?
Well, I hope that, you know, we can get them more and more involved. So as part of that committee, maybe this is something they would like to take on to, you know, do the inspections-
They're not charged with enforcement necessarily.
No, but maybe monitoring.
Been interested in this for a long time.
Yeah.
If you ask them in terms of what they see their role in this is, I don't actually know myself, but-
Well, I'll tell you, Sam, we've had these discussions over the years and the feedback we've- Well, I'll tell you, Sam, we've had these discussions over the years and the feedback we've, we've gotten from open spaces that they don't really have a budget. They don't have the resources, and so it's kind of migrated over to the planning department and the planning board. So what we do is we use our money, planning board's budget, to fund these contracts. And the contracts are written in such a way that the town planner is the point of contact and basically the project manager to whom the contractor reports.
Right.
And then it's up to the town planner to distribute that information to the planning board, and of course, to open space. And to the extent that they, that they want to participate with, with what resources they have is always welcome. But again, we're, we're using planning board money and planning board resources. Right, but we have to sit there and, and survive the, the budget process. And then we have our town planner using planning department hours on open space. And I think we've agreed that that's at least currently the way to go. And then maybe once this, this program gets, gets rolling along with, you know, an agreed upon inspection form, which we seem to have, or pretty close to it, and then an inspection sequence. And then the keeper of the, of the information and all administrative things.
Right.
I think we're, we're on the same page that.
Yeah, I did, my, my only concern is that I know OSPC has had a long history of experience with this stuff. And I would hope that everybody's working together on it in terms of communicating actively going forward. And I, I understand they don't have a budget, on the other hand. They have a lot of experience in some of these areas and are out there looking at things as well periodically, so. Be useful to make sure everybody's taking advantage of the knowledge and all, from all participants in the process, so.
And we also wanted to build on that whole deed research project.
Sure.
So much information was attained through that, and it's easy for us to access that and it gets summaries. But that needs to be maintained and updated, and some of this effort actually helps update the deed. If somebody's there to take on that role.
Right.
It could transition back to keeping that database updated by doing this.
Okay, good.
Yeah, goals to work together.
Close with my perennial pre plea to please post the package online before these meetings, because I was interested in the Northborough Road thing. I took two whacks at that as a ZBA member, but it'd be helpful to be, for folks to be able to see the plans and stuff that are coming before this board, before the meeting.
They, the, the plans are always available at the planning office, and I posted the electronic packages Friday morning. I finally had a chance to get there.
Oh.
And it went out on an e-subscriber, yes, it's on the news and announcements.
Okay, I looked today, I didn't see it, sorry.
Yeah, there's, you'll see part one, you go to one, it'll say one fifty-four, one fifty-six Northborough Route, right under news and announcements.
News and announcements, okay.
Yeah, and there's three files because they were so huge.
Okay.
And then there's a general one for everything else on today's meeting.
And that's where they usually are on news and announcements, so, okay.
Yes, until, there's another way to do that, and the IT person, Tom Laflamme, is going to work with me to make it more like.
Others post it with the agenda.
Yes, that's what we're going to do eventually.
Okay, thank you.
And Sam, I agree with your point, the one thing I also wanted to just emphasize too, that the chairman was talking about. We, we had a lengthy discussion, discussion about the budget this year and because there was a request to cut some pieces of it, and one area that was going to get cut was some of the funding to do things like this. And we voted not to do that, and we pushed back to keep that, so we could do the monitoring that the chairman was talking about.
I guess, I'm, I don't speak for the advisory committee, of which I'm a member, but on an individual advisory member base, I'm very interested in understanding what those cuts are before they get to the final version. I mean, there was essentially no conversation about the planning department budget this year, as I recall. And we typically ask people at advisory, what did you propose or ask for that you didn't get or got cut during the discussion process? And sometimes those are pretty interesting conversations, and advisory members sometimes have opinions about what the town administrator cuts or doesn't cut. And sometimes our chairman has those conversations that we may or may not hear about. But I think that'd be a useful thing to find a way to highlight more as we go through the process. Because I personally am interested in finding some money to do these kind of things that have been ignored for a long time, so. For whatever it's worth, there's one interested spectator here, thanks.
Well, we're trying to.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much for all your efforts in doing this and helping us out to get this program rolling. And we look forward to some kind of final memo draft of all your findings. And I think the reports that you did and the inspections you did were very helpful, as you could see tonight how much information you could see just from, you know, this very basic monitoring. And it kind of opens your eyes to the types of things you might find out there. So I think this program will be very helpful in the future. And again, it's not to like scare people that all this, you know, control is coming down. It's just so that if there are hazardous things, that the town can address them. And we'll have to determine how we go about.
All right, I echo Karina's statements, thank you, appreciate it. And so you know that your, your work will not go unaddressed for the, the items that are significant. Appreciate it.
Always very professional, did you, did you guys have any more for tonight, anymore?
So I just would like to say that as far as for follow-up. Ryan will pull together a summary report of the entire process that will be presented to you, Karina. And I will continue to discuss other things that should be added to the form based on Freddie's comments, other comments. I also wondered if we should have some section about whether or not there's monumentation currently on the site during the inspection. And then as well as figuring out what the next steps are, whether it's a collaboration of just doing guidance as far as what actions should be taken based on what's found in the field, or focusing on just doing more reports and dealing with that later. So conversations with Karina will continue, and we'll provide a report of everything to you guys shortly.
Sure, and we'll, we'll, the board will continue, board and others will continue to give the town planner the feedback as to which direction to go in. Personally, I think more inspections, we're so early in this inspection program that more inspections would be a higher priority than doing anything about what we've found so far. But we'll see what the, what, what the guidance is on it. And feel free to tell Autobahn and your other clients that there are no ticks in Southborough.
I beg to differ. My dog proves that there are.
Maybe that's where they all are.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks, thanks for.
Can I just say one thing? On the report, it says according to the deed, what are the open space requirements? I know many of the deeds going back didn't have any reference to the open space at all. It was all in the decision since the deed research project, we know now to make sure that the deed references that. But, so some of those deeds aren't going to say anything, so it should be the, the decision and/or the deed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the site plan process study. Did each of you see the, the contract? I signed that last week, and the Barrett Planning Group is working on, on that contract right now. Anymore on that one, Karina?
Yes, I contacted Judy today, and she was sending back this evening or tomorrow morning, the signed full contract with a W nine and a certificate of insurance to set up a vendor. And she's already actively moving forward as, you know, to set up the program, to start working.
Any questions on that? Move on to the next one, discussion, vote to reestablish open space design bylaw subcommittee? And vote to establish or dissolve the deed research subcommittee?
So in your package, I printed out, the website has a neat place you can go where you can see the committees and the members and their expiration. And we have two, the deed research and the open space. So the planning board has to decide if they're going to reestablish them or dissolve them.
Your, what's your thinking on the deed research, Karina?
Well, Freddie's not here, so I think it's important that I probably talk to her if she feels that should stay open, unless Mimi, you have some feedback on it.
I think there's some like last, final things that need to be done, like figuring out how to update the spreadsheet, adding on the subdivisions that were done since that was done, adding that, updating that.
Like, um, the one we just, it's just the open field, what's that?
Chestnut.
Chestnut.
Yeah.
There were like ten or eleven additional.
I think there are a couple others. And then we need to figure out how to make that information accessible to the public without them being able to edit it.
Right, that was still in the punch list from before, but I think open space was working on, open space preservation was working on those items under their.
Oh, one, oh, so I think those are the.
I thought they had some additional funding to do some of those lingering things.
Oh, maybe they do, oh, so maybe we should reestablish it until we figure out.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we reestablish the open space design bylaw.
No, no, the deed.
The deed research subcommittee.
Second, motion's been made in second, would it be the same members?
Yes. I, I would, yeah, recommend that Mimi Latrell and Jesse Stein represent the planning board and a member of the open space.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion, all in favor? Four to zero, so we're going to re, reestablish that subcommittee. How about the open space design bylaw subcommittee?
Probably, my thought is because we've been so busy, we haven't really been able to attack that yet or get to it.
Continue, yeah.
If we continue it, hopefully, you know, early, late summer, we could start looking at it again and try. If we take it off, then it will just fall by the wayside altogether.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we reestablish the open space design bylaw committee with the same members that were attending before. Mimi Latrell, Jesse Stein, and Karina Quinn.
Second. Motion's been made in second, and any discussion, all in favor? That one's reestablished, next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, planners' report.
Okay, I have this form for, has to go to the town clerk to the registry of deeds. I just need your signature, Don, and it, what it is, is after the elections every year, you have to let the registry of deeds know who your planning board members are. So once Phil gets back, we can complete that form and give it to the town clerk who processes it. Thank you. We received some additional information from Heidi Davis regarding the five G antenna streamlining and those issues. I forwarded that to the planning board members to take a look at, probably hasn't been a lot of time to do that.
Have we confirmed that that's not already in the town? Because now I'm looking a lot closer at telephone poles, and I see these odd things hanging off, off of them.
With the green lights on them, those transform.
Doesn't have green lights.
I don't know what they are, it's a box or cylinder?
Rectangular box dangling off.
I don't know what they look like, and at some point I can do some research and check what they're supposed to be. If you, if you, if you search it online, there are hundreds of articles on this. The IT community tends to be pro, the neighborhoods tend to be against because of the health implications, so. I don't think it's in Southborough yet, but I can't say for sure. Because I view these as new antennas going up, as new structures, not just attaching to the utility poles, because they have to be much closer together, I think, and into the neighborhoods, so. Public safety building architect is, has imposed a few questions to me about the sign. They were inquiring whether what would be required from the planning board if they changed the sign. And I talked to Don about this briefly, and I gave the architect feedback that if there were insignificant changes that, and the building inspector had to permit the sign anyway for structural reasons or whatever, that it wouldn't have to come back here. But they were to submit anything that they were going to propose to us so we could, the planning board could determine if it was significant enough. So they were discussing that tonight at some meeting. They're not, not really sure what they're going to do yet, so the second thought was regardless of how they change the sign, if they move the sign location or change the illumination, do they need to come back? And I was reading in the bylaw that, you know, the sign permits are through the building inspector, but it needs recommendation from planning board if it's a special permit type of process. So I'm not sure where this falls.
I would, personally, if it's going in the direction that we were all recommending, I would try to be as flexible as possible that they would be able to get it done as smoothly and as efficiently as needed, is my opinion.
Okay, so, all right. So I did inform them that it's probably through the building inspector who's working with them. If he finds it significant enough, he would tell them to, you know, you better vet that. And they'll, they'll submit something to us anyway, so we have a file on it when they make a decision.
Do you know what they're looking at?
No, because they're not sure yet either, they were just throwing some things out there in anticipation of what they might have to do, because they wanted to report back. I'm not sure if it was to the Board of Selectmen, there was another meeting tonight that they were going to be discussing it.
I assume you echoed our recommendation before?
Yeah.
Had to be in line with all the other signs that.
Yeah, they heard that during the meeting, but I.
Current fire station, the townhouse.
Yeah, they even submitted.
Dump.
When they, when they sent.
Transfer station.
When they sent me the email this Monday. No, Friday, they sent me a follow-up question on our Wednesday conversation. The public safety building committee decides to either relocate or modify the lettering on their existing site, will that also trigger planning board review? Photo of existing sign is attached, no decisions have been made. And Jeff, who's the architect, will discuss with the group their preference on Monday night, tonight. She understood that when I talked to her previously, significant changes might trigger, you know, for lighting or the signs, might trigger to come back here, but the building inspector needs to review any changes for permit approval. And then she sent the sign of the existing.
Beautiful sign.
Sign, so maybe they're thinking of relocating that one, and I'm not sure. They, I don't think they're sure yet what they're doing yet, but they're working on that.
Do we, do we know if they've submitted the CR on that to the state yet?
I don't know that yet, no. I'm hoping that they keep me in the loop, because so far, things I go through, they've been telling me. They did issue the building permit, which we signed off on based on the test pits that had to be performed to prove that infiltration basin would work in the rain garden, and Fussin O'Neil reviewed those and found them acceptable. So we gave them the word, I signed off on the permit, and they got, I believe they have their building permit now, so.
Do you, do you have any idea when the actual first true shovel in the ground is going to be?
I don't, but in one of the last packages, I gave you a, a construction schedule. It may be in that, but those are kind of loose because they still hadn't, you know, done the test pits at that time. So it may have changed and pushed it a little forward. But I think two meetings ago, there was a schedule on there, and I can email it to you too, again, if you want to see it. I don't have it in the top of my head when it might be.
Thinking of trying to get one last round of golf in on the old course before it goes away, I was.
Really quickly, Chestnut Hill Farm is looking to possibly do a pavilion. They've been talking about this for a couple of years, where they would have some seating area, some storage, and some bathrooms. And it would be to the close, where the other buildings are in that vicinity. And they were asking whether that would trigger major site plan approval and lid. And I indicated that, you know, based on the conceptual plan they gave me, which was just under two thousand square feet, that it most likely would still warrant coming to the planning board because of. because of the possible use, change in use, the kinds of activities that might draw traffic or required parking because they're anticipating using the existing gravel parking area. And we're not sure if that would be sufficient or not without looking at it. And it would help define what they're allowed to do there, based on what gets allowed so that it protects them and also the town, so that if anybody questions, well, they're doing this there, they can say, no, well, we're allowed to do that. And, you know, that type of thing. So, you know, I'm still under the impression that they need to come before for site plan approval and it should be major. And as far as the lid is concerned, maybe they could ask for waivers on that because of the large size of the property and the small type of development they're doing with its roof runoff and it's clean. And they'd still have to adjust their septic system and redo that. But I definitely think that, you know, the building itself being so close to, you know, 1,995 square feet, there's more disturbance than that because when you dig the hole for the slab or whatever, it takes more than that. So, all right, I just wanted to pass that by you. Postmaster called me the other day and she said that there's a new federal regulation on dead-end cul-de-sacs requiring that when you have several lots, you're supposed to have a box, mailbox now, that the postman's not supposed to have to go to each house. So I asked her to tell me what law that is and send me a copy. And she said she wasn't sure, but she'd look it up and send it to me, but that I would mention it to you, that she had called me and was saying, you know, when the Planning Board does their reviews, they should note that this is coming up or it may already be a requirement. So I haven't heard anything back yet, so she's probably checking that out. EDC is still looking for a coordinator and Conservation has closed their opening for resumes for conservation agent today or yesterday. So they're feverishly looking for somebody to fill Conservation Agent role. I forwarded you an email from Conservation regarding the Chestnut Hill roadway widening related to the subdivision. So hopefully you saw that, you can check it out. Beth Rosenbloom had asked me to forward that to you, so you're just aware of the notice of intent review that was done by their environmental consultant. I think that's it. That's all the news. We are working on meeting minutes. I have Joyce McAnouskis working on it and now with Pam having joined us, we'll be able to catch up very quickly.
Are we doing any more housing, housing program work?
We had a CHOPS meeting last week. The goal is to get the Southborough Housing Authority involved and it's stagnant right now because of things working.
Is the Planning Department expending any more hours on housing?
Not so much right now.
So the answer's yes.
Yes, because, well, I just, at the last meeting, I was able to have, one of the new CHOPS members is going to do the meeting minutes for CHOPS now, Michelle Haran, who was nice enough to say, I'll take those on. So that took the CHOPS minutes, which relates to the housing stuff as well.
There's also been a recent new member to the Housing Authority who's expressed interest in joining CHOPS. So we fully expect that we're going to have a Housing Authority member now representative on CHOPS, which I feel is quite significant progress for the committee.
Very good, Mr. Mills?
The other thing too, the CPC, I believe, is this Thursday bringing representatives from the Community Preservation Coalition in Boston to talk about different housing development opportunities for affordable housing and whatnot. Have you heard about that, Karina?
Yes, it's a mass housing, there's a special workshop or they're having.
No, it's, the Community Preservation Coalition is going to come out and talk about what they've, how CPC funds have been used in the past to help create affordable housing and.
Okay, I don't think I saw that in detail. I think it flashed in front of me for a second and then I recognized it would be interesting, but.
So I know CHOPS was invited, right?
It's on my calendar.
So I'll.
Did I send that email out? No.
I'll dig it up and forward it to you, so in case you, it is a Thursday night, but if that's okay with the chairman.
I just want to say, I have.
You were asking about time spent on housing, that's all.
It hasn't been zero time. I have invested a little more time because I get contacted from some of the parties involved with the resale still of that property on an aside basis outside of the meetings. So I've been trying to address that.
Yeah, so the CPC is trying to, because there is a significant dollar amount that we have set aside with, you know, every year from the set-asides that happen at town meeting, trying to spark some interest on what could be done. And so it's a way of trying to, you know, light that fire or ignite some other interests, look at different ways we could possibly use those funds to get some housing in town, so if.
If you forward that to me, one of the CHOPS members, Michelle Haran, she really wanted to start an initiative to reach out, but we were a little concerned with conflict of interest because she's a real estate agent. But that might be an event that she would love to attend, don't you think, Jesse? That would be something for Michelle, she was looking for something like that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We should forward it out to the CHOPS members to make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, so if you forward me the email on that, I can send it out.
It should be posted already, a posted meeting.
Oh, it's posted, it's a CPC meeting, actual, okay, posted, all right, I can send that out. And then we did receive some information from Sam. He had attended the CHOPS meeting and we were looking, there was a list of properties that he sent to Jesse and Jesse forwarded. So that's another form of research to find properties for affordable housing as well.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion's been made in second and I'll ask the public if they have any more. Guess not, all in favor? Or adjourn?